Evening and thank you all for joining us for the Carlsbad City Council Districts One and Three Candidate Forum. Today is October 3rd, 2022. I want to extend a special thanks, the League of Women Voters, North County San Diego, in the Carlsbad unit, who did all the work to put this forum together tonight. I'm Elizabeth Brady, a member of the League of Women Voters of North County San Diego. As you probably saw in the video clip, the League was founded in 1920 with the intention of preparing women who just got the right to vote to be educated voters. Although we love our historical name, we certainly welcome everyone to be a member of the League, particularly you. As we welcome everyone this evening, we want to remind you of just exactly what the League's mission is, and that's to promote active, informed citizen participation in all levels of government through education and advocacy. I really, really want to emphasize to folks that the League never puts out a position for or against a candidate or a political party. I'm sure you're anxious to hear what's going to happen this evening, so I will let you know that first and foremost, the community has submitted questions that were reviewed by members of the League for duplicates or for ones that aren't relevant to this election. Now, remember, I told you that the League is nonpartisan, so we are very careful to avoid any appearance of partisanship, and the members who sorted the questions, myself and the timer this evening, neither live in nor vote in Carlsbad. The candidates you see before you tonight are running for a four-year term. The format we're going to use this morning, it's been a long day this evening, is a two-minute opening statement from the candidates. We'll keep the District One candidates together and the District Two candidates together. There is one candidate from District One who could not be here this evening, and I will read her opening statement for her, but then, obviously, she won't be answering any questions with us this evening. Normally, I'll give you folks one minute to answer the questions, but I have to say, I've gotten a preview of the questions, and some of them are pretty juicy, so I may ask the timer to give you a little bit more time. The timer will give you clues along the way, and I'll ask her to demonstrate now. When you have 30 seconds left in your response, you'll see this yellow sign. When your time is up, you'll see the stop sign, and that means stop. The order of the candidates was randomly selected before we joined the public, and it's important for folks to know that any video recording of this is actually the property of the League, and you may not use it without permission. In the cases where we do grant permission, it must be shown in its entirety. It may not be edited for political use. We will be posting our copy of the video in about 24 hours on our website. That website address is l w v n c s d dot org, so League of Women Voters, North County San Diego, and you'll be able to see the video in its entirety there. With that, I'm going to ask that we begin our opening statements. We will start with candidate Menzano.
Thank you. When it comes to community service, I don't just talk the talk, I walk the walk. I'm on the Housing Commission, where we deal with the critical issues of affordable housing and homelessness. I serve on the Citizens Committee, reviewing its general management plan, and its alternate name, Carlsbad Tomorrow, was my suggestion. The record will show I have never missed a single meeting since either of these appointments. I am a past treasurer of the Laguna Agua, head of the Laguna Foundation, and the Barrio Fiesta. I was the president of the Rancho Santa Ana Botanical Garden Volunteers. Over the years, I have volunteered with such groups as Brother Benno and Friends of the Library. I do this solely in the interest of public service without remuneration, as do all the members of the city committees, and if elected, will in that spirit contribute all my salary as a council member to local community charities. I seek no endorsements in what is a nonpartisan election, and will perform my duties as a council member solely for the good of the community, not for the preference of any special group. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ward? We've got to get you to unmute.
I'll be better about that. Hi, everyone. My name is Sam Ward. I'm running for Carlsbad City Council, District One. I'm a 20-year Carlsbad resident, a father, a lawyer, and a community volunteer. I'm running for Carlsbad City Council because I have a vision for a safe, affordable, and prosperous Carlsbad, and I have the experience to make it a reality. As an attorney, I've spent my career fighting against corporate fraud and corruption on behalf of retirees and everyday investors. As a community volunteer, I serve as a taxpayer watchdog on Carlsbad Unified School District's Independent Oversight Committee, making sure that the proceeds for the bonds paid for by you, the taxpayer, are spent effectively for the benefit of our children and consistent with the will of voters. I'm running because in the next five few years, Carlsbad will be making major decisions that will significantly impact our community and our quality of life, decisions around homelessness, public safety, the local economy, housing, and climate change. As your council member, I'm committed to increasing public safety in our communities by ensuring that e-bikes, pedestrians, and cars can share our streets safely, and by addressing the recent rise in property crimes with enhanced coordination between police and social services. The Carlsbad I moved to 20 years ago was a middle-class town where working families could afford to live, buy a home, and raise a family. Mine is one of those families. We're losing this Carlsbad, and I'm committed to advocating for real solutions to Carlsbad's housing crisis so we can provide housing for young and working families without altering Carlsbad's unique community character. I am also committed to reducing homelessness in our communities with humane, effective, and evidence-based policies. Carlsbad deserves a council member who shares Carlsbad's values and has the knowledge and experience to effectively represent its residents. It deserves a council member who shows up, like the folks who showed up tonight. It deserves a council member who will roll up his sleeves and bring people together throughout the region and throughout our community to get things done for our community, not a council member who wants the job as a stepping stone to higher office, a council member who will walk door-to-door and talk with his neighbors every single day. I'm going to be that member for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bona.
Good evening. Thank you, Elizabeth, for moderating this. I'm Anthony Bona. You might not recognize me by name, and you definitely don't know me by my yard signs because I don't have any. You probably know me best from the news as the guy who stood up to Cory Schumacher and won. Back in 2020, I began to pay attention and participate in council meetings. It was my opinion that so many of Cory Schumacher's policies were horrible. I was very, very concerned when she had the policies about the restaurants and her masking policy during COVID, and then her caustic behavior when she told the five mayors in North County, including Mayor Hall, to get the F out of town. But the biggest thing that I had an issue with as far as Cory Schumacher was that it was my opinion that she was putting her large campaign donors, unions, in front of community. That was wrong. My punishment was Cory Schumacher weaponized the court system against me to shut me up.
I have a favor to ask. In our League of Women Voters forums, it's really to get to know the candidate rather than spend time critiquing faults with others. So I think it would be great if you talked a little bit more about what you're going to do for the community. Thank you. Anthony, would you like to continue your comments? I'll give you certainly those 20 seconds back.
Hang on one second, please. I'm trying to exit full screen, and I'm not able to.
Escape might help.
Okay, so I think it's important for people to understand who I am. So if that has to do with critiquing someone, I think that that's important. But anyways, we'll move on. After the judge's decision of that I was awarded, I worked tirelessly every day to have Cory Schumacher recalled. 4,500 other residents of Carlsbad agreed with me. 4,500 other residents thought that Cory Schumacher was toxic. Why am I running? I'm running not just to represent my district, but I'm running to fix our council. Our council is broken, and that's going to be, I'm going to critique there. So the silly antics of Priya Batel and Teresa Costa have us looking at deficit spend scenario, studying dead tree stumps at the tune of $35,000 of taxpayer money is silly, and Teresa Costa texting during council meetings is unacceptable. My platform is simple: community first, politics second. I'm a guy who's not accepting any campaign donations. I want to make decisions for you. Yes.
Thank you. I need a beat in this for a second. I need to confer with the timer and the Zoom admin because I am concerned that we are breaking the guidelines, which is not fair to the candidates. So just give us a beat to communicate for a second offline. All right. Thanks for indulging. Staying true to the intention of forums that are not debates, so we do not have the opportunity for candidates to rebuttal in the comments that are made for them, and to keep this as a platform to show the candidates' best foot forward, we're going to refrain from what could be seen as certainly beyond critiquing and saying what another candidate did wrong. Let's focus on what you're going to do right, and if we have to, we will end the forum or ask people who can't adhere to guidelines that they had looked at in advance to leave the forum. All right. We had one candidate from District One that could not attend tonight, but sent a comment. I will read it in the opening statement now. Hello, everyone. My name is DeeDee Trejo Rolip, and I am running for Carlsbad City Council, District One. I am sorry I could not participate today, but I had some family obligations to attend. So I am writing to share a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Carlsbad. I am a mother of two grown children, and I am a third generation running my family's business, Lola's Deli, in the Barrio. I am running for city council because what I see happening in my hometown is becoming concerning. I feel we need to better address the multifaceted issue of homelessness, look at how development is affecting our neighborhoods and daily lives while preserving the character of our village and barrio. We also need to support our small businesses, which are the heart of our community. I am not a politician, nor am I viewing this as a stepping stone. I am running because I love my hometown and feel the need to get involved further and make a difference. This position is intended to be nonpartisan, and I believe we have cast that aside and have let politics and greed overcome our commitment to us, the residents who compromise or comprise our community. That was my mistake, not hers. I am striving for smart historical growth, which does not forget our history, but builds on the strong foundations of the community, family, and character. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the opening statements of the District Three candidates. The first candidate we'll hear from is candidate Pearson.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, North County, for holding this important forum. My wife Karen and I, with our youngest son, moved to Carlsbad 15 years ago from LA for the schools, low crime rates, well-managed city, beaches, low traffic congestion, community spirit, support for the business community, and residents' input to the future of our city. My public service and commitment to Carlsbad includes CUSD Board trustee, keeping our students, teachers, staff, and volunteers safe on campus. Neighbors, community leaders, business owners, former city council members share their concern on the direction and priorities. We saw Carlsbad's quality of life being in jeopardy with increasing crimes. Homeless problem had not been addressed with real numbers. Reactive, not proactive decision on traffic safety and e-bike issues, and during the pandemic, decisions that negatively affected both our restaurant and lodging sectors of our economy. A decision toward a 10-year, 270 million contract to a trash and organic waste company was against a city hired expert and city staff recommendation. My qualifications to serve as your next city council member starts with my demonstrated commitment to all Carlsbad residents and business community. My executive experience running businesses for Westinghouse Broadcasting and Cable, Interlink Electronics, and the Weather Channel give me the expertise to return our budget to being balanced over the next three years. At the same time, make investments in capital projects that the community wants and helps to bring new revenues to the city, including rail trenching. Using other city success on reducing homelessness and crime, I propose to solve these problems and bring a proactive and full-time council member to Carlsbad. Thank you, and please go to raypearsonforcitycouncil.com to see all my solutions.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, candidate Batel.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Priya Batel. I am the council member that represents District Three, and I'm running for reelection. First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, North County, San Diego, especially Carlsbad's contingent for putting this together, and for those that are joining us today for being here and being active participants in your democracy. So I'm actually running for reelection because, as you may or may not know, I actually grew up here in Carlsbad. I had the opportunity to go through the public schooling system here. I'm raising my son here. I have a great family that were three generations deep here in the city of Carlsbad with my parents, and then, of course, my son. And so I have the support of our Carlsbad firefighters and our Police Officers Association. I am also endorsed by many of our local legislators, our congressmen, and organizations like the Sierra Club, North County Realtors Association, so have a lot of partnerships that I've made, whether it's at the local level, federal level, you know, organization-wide. And I know that as a working mom, I understand the issues that are affecting our community. We have so many different things that we've been grappling with in the past four years. It's been a dynamic time, and I think that what I've been able to provide is consistent and collaborative leadership. In this divisive time throughout our country, it's really important that we don't point fingers and that we actually work together to come up with solutions. And I think that's something that I've had the opportunity to do is really work with people on our council, regardless of background, and have the opportunity to come up with solutions that actually work for our city, whether that's with regards to homelessness and housing, sustainability, economic development, things that we actually hadn't thought about. For instance, with economic development, I had helped with creating our Economic Development Committee, and then also helped secure funding that would go to our small and medium-sized businesses during the COVID pandemic. So really looking forward to continuing to do that great work in the next four years when elected. And again, Priya Batel.
Thank you. There's no point in starting with an easy question. So the first question to District One is a good one, for sure. Why does District One have three times the proposed sites during this RENA cycle? Where is the equity in that? So for clarity, the RENA cycle is actually the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, R H N A. The first candidate we're going to ask to answer that is Menzano. We'll have one minute. We've got to get our muting on and off. We'll get it down here. Timer, can we restart him now? Thank you.
I'm no nerd. I'm sorry. But anyway, the issue is, where are we going to put the needed housing? The fact of the matter is, District One is the most densely built, and it is also the most built up of any of the regions. But also, interesting enough, it has sites that have been identified by the city, which can be used to build affordable housing. The struggle in affordable housing is keeping it affordable. That means building costs have to be reasonable, and also that the communities that we build are livable, that the people that move into affordable housing have access, convenient access, to all the services they need. That is not a simple problem, but I believe Carlsbad actually is stepping in the direction of solving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ward?
Hi, thank you. Frankly, I believe there are two reasons that we have seen most of the RENA sites located in District One. One is that for the last year and a half, District One has not had a representative who was elected by the people. Two is frankly, for a long time, District One, regardless of who the council member is, has had to deal with a mayor who has looked at District One and said, frankly, these people pay less in property taxes, and therefore, they should get less of the benefits that are provided to the city of Carlsbad. That's wrong, and I'm going to push back on that. I'm going to fight for our community. And also, we now have state laws that make it easier to rezone existing commercial and light industrial property in other parts of Carlsbad for residential. I want to move to do that so we can create new walkable communities in other portions of our city.
Thank you. Candidate Bona.
Thank you. I have to say that I agree with the first part of Mr. Ward's assessment, which is we have had instability, not just in the recent round of council members, but you might recall that Barbara Hamilton fell ill or had some health issues. So there has been this instability, and with the instability comes the other council members sense that, and they are pushing things in our district. I've watched it in the past year with Councilmember Batel and with Councilmember Costa. They don't want stuff in their turf. They want it in our turf, and that's wrong. And I'm going to stand up to Councilmember Batel and Councilmember Costa and say, no, you're not going to do that. You're not going to, you're not going to pile on.
Candidate Bona, this is it. Please do not reference other candidates. Please talk about what you are going to do. Everyone else is managing to abide by those rules, and I expect you to abide by them as well.
It's very relevant to the conversation, moderator.
I think you can do it without citing the specific opinions of other candidates. Would you like to continue, or would you like to drop?
I'll continue till you drop me.
Next time, we're dropping you. I believe that the candidates can be respectful of one another, and I believe that the audience really deserves a chance to get to know you, and I hope you'll let them do that.
Well, I believe that the audience needs to know the full picture, moderator. So if, you know.
This is not, this is not the forum for it. Thank you. We'll continue on.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
All right. District Three, your first question. Windsor Point is supposed to get homeless people off the streets of Carlsbad. Get only five apartments built for $600,000 per unit do that. What will you do to fix that? This goes first to candidate Pearson.
I thought I was doing good on the mute thing. I think originally Windsor Point was supposed to be for a certain category of person, and then it was allowed for other people to move in to that. So I think it's also making sure that whatever we do in terms of housing, we stay strict to those regulations and what the intent was for that. And I also understand that if it's for veterans, it should be for veterans specifically. And I do want to comment about that, the housing, very quickly. I know that wasn't the question, but I just want to say this real quickly, is that I believe that we need to take some of them are commercial areas and rezone it for residential to really balance out the whole community in terms of low-cost housing. Thank you.
Candidate, yeah, too fast on the fingers. Thank you, candidate Batel.
Yes, thank you so much. And so specifically for Windsor Point, that actually is for folks that are experiencing homelessness, that are veterans. That is accurate. We also, they were unable to secure funding, the folks that were actually building it. And what they did was they went out to actually secure funding again from the state and from the federal government. And from that, the, you know, what came back was basically some parameters around what else they could actually have in that particular housing establishment that would allow for folks experiencing homelessness to have the opportunity to be housed. And so they added the parameter that folks that were also potentially having serious mental illness were also able to stay there. So we are actually housing people that are veterans there. Veterans and their families are being housed there. We do have others that are from Carlsbad that are being housed there that have experienced homelessness. So I do think overall, it is actually ensuring that, you know, folks experiencing homelessness are being housed and have permanent supportive housing, which is the goal.
Thank you very much. Now, we're back to a District One question. What is your opinion about working on more potable water sources for Carlsbad? What would you suggest? This question goes first to candidate Ward.
I think we need to look at the availability of technological upgrades as they come available to the D-SAL plant. The D-SAL plant, obviously, is located in Carlsbad, kicks into the county water authority and provides water back to Carlsbad through the county water authority. Frankly, we are going to have to get used to being less and less dependent on the Colorado River because there are too many draws on it, and it is, it is suffering. So we are going to need to look at alternative forms of water. The best alternative forms of water are likely D-SAL. We're also going to have to look at increased conservation. So as we're building new housing in Carlsbad, we have to make sure that it is very low water use housing, i.e. not big backyards and not big front yards, a little different than the traditional single-family homes that we built in much of Carlsbad in the past. Those are two approaches I think we need to focus on.
Thank you. Candidate Bona?
I have to say, again, I agree with Mr. Ward on this one. In addition, I think that education of the public might help in terms of increasing the water supply and reducing water usage. So that's all I have to say on this one. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Menzano.
The city council also serves as the water board, interestingly enough. And one of the things that we're looking at, ought to be looked at, is basically to actually recycle all the water, include sewage, toilet to tap. That is totally feasible, totally safe, and a good way to basically keep the water that we get in circulation, losing only the amount of water that goes to evaporation. We can do this also by encouraging increasingly making it more feasible for people to change the way they garden. You can do this, and you can see houses all over the city, homes that are trying their very best to accommodate themselves to the change. We have a fortunate momentary preference in water. The city of Carls, San Diego County, has negotiated water rights, taking them from farmers, and those are...
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
A question for the District Three candidates. What kind of preparation for climate change do you think the city should be making? We'll start with candidate Batel.
Sure. Thank you so much. And I think, you know, we've been preparing for that. We've been at the forefront of that. However, in order to continue to address it in a very forward-thinking manner, I do think we need to make sure we have adjustments to our climate action plan, for instance. So making sure that we're really thinking about ways for our mobility, how we can diversify that. So Sustainable Mobility Plan is something that I know we've passed in the last year, thinking about biking options, walking options, you know, making that safer for folks so that they're able to get around more quickly. We also, from a city perspective, organizational perspective, are moving to trying to be all-electric fleet. So I think, you know, trying to get to that a little bit more quickly, having more charging stations, electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city. And then, of course, we also actually require photovoltaic on new buildings. So also thinking about ways that we could do that for any older buildings and incentivizing folks for wanting to do that. So those would be different ways to go ahead and address that.
Candidate Pearson? Candidate Pearson.
So I, I think you can't take the whole sustainability and climate as in one silo like the city of Carlsbad. I think it's becomes, start with the regional, which means our local communities, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos and as well as Encinitas and say, what can we collectively do to be more independent, energy independent? And what can we do with sea rise? We have a state beach here in Carlsbad and a sea rise prediction by 2050 that we're going to actually see the, the impacts of that. Then we got to ask the state, are they going to plan on moving our state beach farther east in terms of facilitating the change in the sea rise? But I think just like the issue we recently are going through the summer of having on our state beaches less sand, we need to do this collectively. We need, and I think there's some great things the city is doing, but I think this needs to be collaborative. I think we need to work as a region on this. And on our water issues, I think San Diego is probably one of the best counties when it comes to water in, in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back to District One and this is a long question. So timer, can we give them 90 seconds, a minute and a half to answer this one? You'll still get the warning sign at 30 seconds though, be your first warning. Okay, so here it is. The city of Los Angeles recently passed an ordinance prohibiting encampments near sensitive areas, including schools, parks, libraries and the like. Would you be willing to support a similar ordinance in Carlsbad and get rid of the encampment near Cole Library? Additionally, how do you propose to make the library a place where parents feel safe and comfortable dropping their kids off before and after school programs, tutoring, et cetera? Currently, many parents are very concerned about sending their kids to the library. We'll ask candidate Bona to address that first. And again, it's 90 second response if you'd like that much time.
Good moderator. I'm very familiar with the safe zones that were set up in Los Angeles. I believe it's a 500 foot perimeter around any school park, et cetera. So yeah, I think that that's a good idea, especially seeing that our homeless population, while we need to treat them compassionately, seem to be more violent and are creating more violent crime. So I am a person who believes in safety of vulnerable populations like young kids and elderly. So I think it would be a great thing if we instituted that over at Pine Avenue Park, which has the, not only the facilities for kids with the playground, but also it has the, the senior center over there. As far as the second part of your question about keeping the library safe, thank you for that 30 second marker. Maybe a little bit more policing, maybe having, yeah, more, more policing in the library area. That's all I have for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Monzano.
The idea of homeless as always dangerous is flawed. They are a wide, wide mix of people representing a wide, wide range of problems. You can only address them case by case. My daughter has had, has woke up one day and seen somebody sleeping on her front porch who used her front yard as a bathroom. That happens. There have been at least two crimes that appear to be caused by homeless people. I think what we need to do is to actually organize our systems so that we supervise these areas adequately. If you go to the library, the cars that used to park there overnight no longer do. If you go in and sit in the library, you don't see the homeless that you saw sitting at the back tables as you did. So the city is doing something right. They are addressing the, the problem of homeless in a humane manner, but not with any illusions that there are no potential threats. So if you'll notice, we have a police force that has a homeless response group. We have funds specially developed and spent on homeless issues. And I think that we need to work this progressively. There are no instant solutions to the homeless problem nor to danger.
Candidate Ward.
In short, yes, I'll support such an ordinance. However, I do have doubts about its constitutionality and I don't want to spend a lot of taxpayer money fighting an ordinance, fighting for an ordinance that will ultimately be ruled unconstitutional. We also have to address the fact that moving homeless, homeless people around does not solve the issue of homelessness any more than our previous practice of waiting until people who are suffering from mental health problems, substance abuse problems or lack of housing, waiting until they committed a crime and throwing them in county jail for a while addressed homelessness. We have to start addressing the root causes of homelessness on an individual basis with humane, evidence-based effective solutions. And Carlsbad has done that to a good extent, but there is more for us to do as a community and a region and a state. Governor Newsom's recent care court law is a good step in the right direction. The hot team recently reported out to the city council a, a success story that involved a woman who was put into a conservancy and received treatment, mandatory mental health treatment after, I believe, 109 police calls. That's 109 times in a year, the police were working as public health workers rather than police officers. Rather than responding to crimes, they were dealing with public health and mental health issues. That's a, that's a poor use of our resources and it doesn't ultimately solve, it doesn't ultimately solve the problem. So we have to address that and cut that process to shorter and more effective so we can get people who need care, care and get them off of our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. A question to the District Three candidates. What would you see as the two most pressing traffic safety measures the city should enact? Candidate Pearson, you're up first.
We, we've had some fatalities lately that are very disturbing to me and to a lot of the residents, not only in District Three, but the whole city to do that. And a lot of it has to do with slowing people down here in Carlsbad speeding to do that. So I think one of the, the biggest things to enact for the city is to make sure on, not only our main thoroughfares, but in a lot of in our residential areas that don't have speed calming, is, is to start looking at how to slow people down, not only on our main thoroughfares. Absolutely. I live off of Carlsbad Boulevard and people do not, do not abide by the speed limit there. So we have to use some strategies, not just education, but I'm, I'm of the mind that we have to have more enforcement. We have to have speed calming as the main, main strategies to get people to start slowing down. And I think you said the second one, and I think the second one has to do with e-bikes. And then particularly as a school board trustee, I think it's time that kids that are under 18 are licensed to drive e-bikes. And with that licensing comes the, the responsibility and the education that'll be necessary to be safe on those e-bikes. Thank you.
Candidate Bob Patel.
Yes, thank you for the question. And I think, you know, something that we've been very actively working on, on the city council. I think, you know, from the perspective of the two most pressing traffic safety measures, first I'll address, you know, the three Es, right? That's something that we talk about when we're talking about roads, which is engineering, education and enforcement. And so one of the things that we just talked about at one of our meetings was what would be, what would provide the most substantial benefit to the community? And changing the character of the roads is something that we've been talking about. And that's something that I alluded to earlier when I was talking about the sustainable mobility plan, whether that's traffic calming, making it easier for folks to get around in bikes, walking around. So really ensuring that distracted driving is not happening. So that's that whole education enforcement aspect of things. And of course, in and around schools and really working with our school districts to ensure that we have a comprehensive plan in place to really think about not only the character of the roads near there, but an access plan for the schools. Whether there's like more visible crosswalks, safe routes to school is something that we're working on with our traffic and mobility commission and something that'll come back to the city council. So I really think, you know, it needs to be a very comprehensive approach. Those are obviously two things that can easily be done and can be passed. But I do think that overall there are a lot of other measures that need to be done in order to make sure that our streets are safer for everyone.
Thank you. Let's change gears a little bit. District One, in one minute, tell us what you would do to support music, theater and art programs in Carlsbad. We'll ask candidate Ward to answer first.
That is a change of pace. We actually have a couple of neat opportunities in District One. New Village Arts Theater is getting reborn as we speak. We are about to engage in a process of rebuilding City Hall, which I think might provide us with opportunities to look at, say, providing an amphitheater. So we can do outdoor city council meetings and provide a space for public performances. I'd also like to look at providing more kind of public art performances within the village itself. So, you know, we oftentimes have music on Fridays, making that a consistent thing or making it, you know, bringing in more bands on a monthly basis. We have a very active public art scene headed by our neighbors like Brian Snyder in our community. Finding more funding to encourage them and encourage the development of public art throughout our community is a really good kind of homegrown way to, to bring more art and character to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next answering is candidate Monzano.
We have a very rich art and the music community. There are museums, many opportunities in our, our, our park concerts and in our theater that really provide a very solid program. The city is generous in supporting these. Take a look at the way the New Village Arts pays such a low, low, low rent and they sponsor all these music festivals in various occasions downtown. We can do more of it. We can certainly do things to encourage artists. I myself, my paintings hung in the library and in the senior center. So I know that the possibilities are great. We need to basically stimulate the community as much as we need to provide resources.
Thank you. Candidate Bona.
Thank you. So while I can't touch on all of these in one minute, music, theater and arts, I can tell you that one idea that I've been kind of walking around with is down on the lower boardwalk, I think people in District One know what I'm talking about, would be a great opportunity to have people do some type of mosaic tiles at both the entrance where Tamarack Beach parking lot is. And when you kind of come down to the boardwalk from Pine Street. Thank you for the 30 seconds. That's all I have. Thanks, moderator.
Thank you. District Three, what would be the most important issue you want to work on if you are able to obtain the city council seat? We start with candidate Pearson.
I want that other question. That was a lot more fun.
Put it in your two minute wrap up, right?
Yeah, okay. But I will tell you, you know, soon, soon as you said that I was, is, we, we have to get the budget back into a, a planned balanced position. And so the first thing that I'd be working on is, is working with, with my colleagues and city staff on getting the budget balanced, but it really teeters on the homelessness issue. But I think the first thing is to get the, the budget back into a position where it will be balanced.
Candidate Bob Patel.
Yes, thank you. I think no matter who you talk to, top of mind is housing and homelessness. And so I think for me, it would be really making sure that we're addressing that holistically. We have had the opportunity as a council to look at the housing element and pass it and we're getting feedback on that. So making sure that we're continuing to listen to the community on that specifically, figuring out ways that we can continue to accommodate growth in a way that's smart and allows for, you know, our, our future generations, the opportunity to be here. And then from the homelessness perspective, I know folks got to talk to that a little bit earlier, but from my perspective as a public health professional, being able to do something where we can work as a region. I know I had had the opportunity to actually co-author something that had gone to the county and the county supervisors actually have now spearheaded an effort here in North County to have social workers on the ground. So really thinking about holistic solutions, not only for housing, but also for homelessness, to make sure that we're really taking a, a really comprehensive approach that not only our city council is working on, but something that we can work on together.
All right. District Three, where do you stand on the expansion of Palomar Airport? Will you support conditional use permit 172 and the citizens' right to vote on any airport expansion? Candidate Monzano, please.
Oh, I remember when I first moved here, you could actually fly from that airport to anywhere in the world. Just check in and leave your car parked permanently until you return. I think the issue of the airport is one of sound, the noise it makes. What I expect is that over time, technology will solve that issue. But in the meantime, I think we need to protect the citizens that live under that space. And I would support any effort to ensure that they are assured.
Thank you. Candidate Bona.
I am in absolute favor of expanding the airport to bring in more revenue, to bring in more business into Carlsbad. We, as I understand, we're going to be in a near deficit spend scenario very shortly. And I think we need to look at many different alternative ways of bringing in revenue. People who live in the airport know they, when they bought their house, it wasn't like the airport just magically appeared. So they knew what they were getting. So absolutely for more revenue. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. Candidate Ward.
I am opposed to further expansion of Palomar Airport. As a business traveler and a, a, a pleasure traveler, I've recognized that even when we had commercial service at Palomar, it was not useful for the vast majority of passengers. People would go to San Diego or go to LAX if they were flying somewhere or John Wayne because it had better op, they had better options and more availability. And frankly, when the airport, when the airport issue came up before the Board of Supervisors last year, the Airport Authority of Palomar acknowledged that our passenger terminal is not sufficient to, to support increased commercial travel. So a massive expansion is just going to get us, which will cost $50 million, by the way. It's just going to get us another bill so we can build a bigger terminal. Frankly, all of this is chasing revenue that I don't believe is going to come and I think it's a waste of money.
Thank you. District Three, a new question to you. Our three lagoons are all facing increased sedimentation issues. Do you have any idea what should be done? Candidate Pearson.
So this is, this is one of those questions where it really has to do with collaboration between the state, our city and the county, because everybody has a vested interest in the three lagoons to do that. And I think collaboratively, instead of all the responsibility being on Carlsbad, it should be a collaborative effort. It should be scientific based on it. And, and I would even say Oceanside and maybe even Encinitas should be in the conversation at this point because of, because of ways intrusion into those lagoons happens. So I think the first part, solving this is, is to get the right people at the table.
Candidate Bob Patel.
Yes, thank you for the question and something that I know we've been talking about and struggling with. And we do, do have dredging of the lagoons that happens pretty frequently. I think that it's really important to continue to make sure that we do have that opportunity to ensure that there isn't necessarily increased sedimentation issues that are happening. I am on the Sandag Shoreline Preservation Working Group. So we are actually trying to come up with ways and solutions that we can continue to address this in a holistic manner. I think one of the things that we are actually working with our neighboring cities, whether it's Oceanside or Encinitas, so really working not only with our coastal cities, but ensuring that as a Carl, as Carlsbad, that we're receiving the resources, not only from the city perspective, but also from Sandag in order to be able to address those increased sedimentation issues and ensure that we have that continued dredging happening so that we can really make sure that this isn't an issue that folks are, you know, continuously letting us know about. So, thank you.
Thank you. District One, your constituents want to know more about. District one, your constituents want to know more about you and your active engagement. In the last two years, how many city council meetings have you attended to learn more about the function of government and how the meetings are actually run? We start with candidate Bona.
Wow, that's probably have attended, of course, we're talking about COVID, so there wasn't a lot of physical attendance. But even that considered, I would say probably about twenty meetings. I I'm almost afraid to say some stuff, Elizabeth, because some of the things I spoke about were things you were forbidding me to talk about.
I'd like to reframe that slightly. I'm just asking you to adhere to the guidelines. And I also have great confidence that you can frame things without calling people out.
Yeah, well, I mean, I went to council meetings. I was one of the first guys to ask Cory Schumacher to step down from her council seat.
All right. I'm not sure that you really needed to share that to address what you learned about the function of government. So we'll move, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Candidate Ward.
Sure. I think I have attended about a quarter to a third of the meetings online or watched the videos after. I've submitted comments to several meetings, including comments about our appointments to Sandag and other regional groups. I've also taken part in the Citizens Police Academy to get more familiar with our police department, how they function. As the father, as the son of a police officer, it was important to me to grasp that. And I've engaged in the committee, community in other way. Like I say, serving on the Independent Oversight Board for Carlsbad Unified. I've also been a speaker for the Carlsbad Education Foundation Student Leadership Academy and other opportunities within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Manzano.
I have appeared before the council many, many times over the years and met with council members and made presentations, written letters. Now, I can't quantify that in terms of this recent period. For one thing, COVID sort of put a damper on a lot of that. But I believe that citizen engagement is important and coming before the council is significant and helpful.
Thank you. We're actually going to do a repeat question because we had very similar ones come up in the submissions. So for District three, we're going back to you all for the question about Palomar Airport. So to recap it, where do you stand on the expansion? And would you support CUP, the conditional youth permit one seventy-two, and the citizens' right to vote on any expansion? This goes first to candidate Pearson.
I wanted to make sure I was unmuted. I think I agree with, it should go back to the residents. I've been walking the District three for the last nine months. And the, one of the main issues that has come up is the noise. Noise. So I'm going to be representing their position on the council. And it should be, if anything is going to increase noise, then I'm not going to be in favor of anything that's going to increase noise from that airport. And I also do support the notion that that airport has become such controversy in our community on several levels that the community should have a right to vote on expansion or not. Thank you.
Candidate Pat Patel.
Yes, I have been on the record saying that I don't want the airport to expand. I've also been on the record saying that the, you know, people should have the right to vote. So I stand by that. I also have advocated when this came before the County Board of Supervisors last year around this time, I did actually call all of the supervisors before they voted to ensure that they wouldn't be increasing the footprint, which they did end up voting to increase by a bit. And so I do think that overall, anything that is going to impact the quality of life with regards to the airport in our community needs to go to the people and that we need to ensure that we are doing everything possible to protect their overall quality of life.
Thank you. District one. Are guns a problem for Carlsbad? Should we be doing more? Candidate Manzano, respond first, please.
The problems of guns is a national problem, more than is it a Carlsbad problem. I don't know to what extent, for instance, individuals in Carlsbad are armed. I have no idea that we have any particular threat from citizens being armed. I don't see anything in our crime reports or our history that suggests that we are under a threat. There have been, there was a shooting, but it was not by a man from Carlsbad who came to Kelly School. People will remember that. But overall, I will tell you that I believe that the argument is about an amendment in the Constitution and that in Carlsbad, you can take an individual stance on that. My own feeling is that we shouldn't have military-grade weapons available to ordinary citizens. I don't see why that's useful for either hunting, protecting yourself, or even target shooting.
Thank you. Candidate Ward.
As I'm proud to be a Moms Demand Action Gun Sense candidate because I believe gun violence is touching every community in our country, including Carlsbad. And it's not simply a matter of gun crime. Access to guns dramatically increases suicide rates in our communities, and this is a measurable fact, a measurable fact. We lose people every day who would otherwise survive and have an opportunity for mental health care because of the acts, easy access to guns in our community. Toddlers kill Americans on the, on an average of once a week, armed toddlers, because we lack adequate gun storage in many of our communities. I will fight to make sure we have better gun storage in our community and we provide better access to gun storage and free gun locks to our community to make sure that our community is a gun-safe city. Thank you.
Candidate Bona.
So that if I recall the question, it was, are guns a problem for Carlsbad? And the answer is no, they're not. I am in favor of safe storage of guns and responsible gun ownership. But that's about the extent of it on the send. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. All right, District three. What are your priorities to improve bicycle safety, especially regarding the proliferation of e-bikes? Candidate Pearson.
So I think I already shared that I'm supportive of a couple of things when it comes to e-bikes. And I want to separate the under eighteen and the over eighteen population that is using e-bikes. Only because I've gotten a lot of feedback from our principals in our schools saying how many kids have had contusions, broken bones, concussions, even on some cases on the e-bikes. We are fortunate not to have any of our young people be a fatality. So and I've heard enough stories and experienced enough to see a lot of our e-bike rider, young people under eighteen violating traffic laws, violating physics a few quail at times. So I think they need to be licensed under that. And I also think that we're doing a good job about educating particularly those who are over eighteen in terms of following the traffic rules and laws of the state of California when it comes to riding an e-bike. But I think it's really our younger generation we have to work on.
Thank you. Candidate Pat Patel.
And thank you for the question and something that I think our council has been prioritizing. We were the first in the region to pass an e-bike ordinance and something that I think we're really proud of. We did pass the Sustainable Mobility Plan last year, last January, twenty twenty-one, which really thinks about ways that we can incorporate more safe bike lanes throughout our community. Since we did declare an emergency for our traffic safety, we've also ensured that we're actually going to prioritize and kind of fast-track some of the capital improvement projects throughout our city. So whether that's, again, changing the character of the roads or continuing to invest in our sustainable mobility plan by having visible and designated bike lanes, I think it's really important to ensure that we're doing that. And again, going back to those three Es of engineering, education, and enforcement, really making sure that we're really focusing on that education piece. As a public health person, a lot of it is really education and prevention, right? So making sure whatever we can do to actually ma- make it as safe as possible for all those that are actually going to be going around and biking throughout our community. So that would be it.
Thank you. I'm going to give the candidates a second to catch their breath and thank them. You guys have been on a marathon here answering questions. Very well done. And I want to let our audience know some important reminders. So while the candidates have been doing a fantastic job sharing tonight, they're not the only thing on the ballot. In California, we always are inundated with measures that we need to think through. One of the educational opportunities the League of Women Voters offers is a pro and con, which is a non-biased evaluation of the ballot measures. And I have to say, they really do a fantastic job of just informing voters, and then it's the voter's choice. We have that pro and con forum if you want to watch it live on October fifteenth. Otherwise, it will be recorded and you can watch it at your leisure. You can find that on our website, W-L-W-V-N-C-S-D.org. If you're also looking for another resource that the league supports for being nonpartisan, it's VotersEdge.org. The dates you want to remember, Election Day is November eighth. The last, the last day to register is October twenty-eighth. So I know you all are registered, but if there's something in your household you need to nudge along, get them in there by the end of this month. If something happens and you don't motivate them until November eighth, let them go down, cast their ballot. It'll be provisional. But as long as they meet the requirements, it will be counted. You should be starting to see your mail-in ballots in about the next five days. And if you're curious as to where yours at, you can track it on SDvote.com. That's also a great resource for knowing where you can drop off your ballot and where the nearest polling places are. Just remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. We need everyone out there participating. We're now going to go to the closing comments. Each candidate will have two minutes to share their final thoughts with you. And we'll do it in reverse order of the opening statements. So we'll actually start with District three and candidate Pat Patel.
Great. Well, thank you again for having us tonight to the League of Women Voters, North County, San Diego. My name is Priya Bat Patel. I'm the council member that represents District three, and I look forward to being re-elected in November and serving for the next four years. As I mentioned, it's been an opportunity of a lifetime to have the pleasure of serving the community I grew up in. It's really something that I've truly enjoyed, getting to know my community in a way that I think is something that from a public health and public policy perspective, that I really feel like I get up every morning and really want to continue to do it every day. You know, it's living my purpose. And I think that's something that we really truly should have in a representative is somebody that wants to do this job, right? Somebody that actually wants to get up, do this job every single day and work with people, whether it's on your council collaboratively and in a positive manner. Something that I know I pride myself in is making sure that I can work with everyone. And I know I mentioned it earlier, but it's so important in this divisive climate that with our, with what we're trying to show our children and generations that are going to follow us, that we can actually work with people regardless of what their values are and that we can actually work with them in order to get things done. And I know I've done that. I know I've delivered on that here in the city. And I think I can do that again when the time comes in November. And so looking forward to having the opportunity to do that, to tackle some of the hardest issues that our country has faced, our city has faced, our state has faced, whether that's homelessness and housing, sustainability, traffic, you know. It's really something that I know I have the solutions for. I am our division president for the League of California Cities. So looking forward to being able to advocate not only for Carlsbad, but on behalf of the county as well. And I know that I can do that once I'm back in office in November. So looking forward to that. And again, Priya Bat Patel, council member for District three, and looking forward to earning your support when the time comes.
Candidate Pearson.
Once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all your history and traditions as well, too. Thank you. A question for all of Carlsbad and those that are tuning in tonight. Is Carlsbad in a better fiscal shape than four years ago? And the real question is, are city services in jeopardy? Yes, they are in jeopardy. Do you feel safer now than four years ago? I don't know if anyone can see this. But this is actually a chart that shows crimes that are up over the last four years. And I'd be glad to share that with anybody. So do you feel safer? And people don't feel safer. How many people are experiencing homeless are now self-reliant? We don't have a number. My answers are what I hear walking the third district for the last nine months. They just can't believe the city has financial problems. And I like your solutions of freezing job hiring, ask each department for a plan to reduce costs over the next three years with inflation built in, evaluate all positions without jeopardizing critical city services. We don't know how many people are experiencing homelessness. And the annual point in time count is not accurate. And why do I say that? According to the GAO report released in twenty twenty, they said it wasn't accurate. Now is the time for change in the third district with an experienced problem solver and independent of special interest. You all deserve more complete explanations. Please go to our campaign website, RayPearsonForCityCouncil.com. And thank you.
Thank you. Now your closing comments from the District one candidates. Candidate Bona.
Thank you. Can't believe we made it this far. Just want to remind everyone in Carlsbad and District one, I accept no campaign donations. Zero. I'm not backed by the Democratic Party, and I don't have big unions who are backing me. I'm nobody's puppet. Albert Einstein once said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result." People in D1, you deserve better than being third in line behind unions and political parties. You deserve to be first in line. My platform is simple, community first, politics second. WWW dot bonaforcarlsbad dot com, WWW dot Bona, the number four, carlsbad dot com. Thank you.
Candidate Ward.
Thank you. And thank you to the League of the Women Voters, their volunteers, and the moderator for hosting this debate or forum, excuse me. As I noted before the audience was allowed in, some of my earliest memories are going to League of Women Voter events with my mom. So that early engagement and that engagement and hard work by the members of the League of Women Voters really has a profound impact on our community. So I truly am grateful to you. I also want to thank the many people who joined us tonight. I'm sorry that you didn't get to hear from all the candidates for District one. You deserve their responses. But I am really glad for the answer for the questions you brought to us, and I'm glad that you got to hear answers from the folks who decided to join us. I'm running because I'm looking forward to getting things done for our community. That means working collaboratively with, collaboratively, excuse me, with representatives at the local, regional, and state levels. I've built support amongst our city council members, amongst our Board of Supervisors and amongst elected officials at the state level, because I know that one vote on the city council cannot get things done. A bomb thrower can throw bombs and yell and name-call all day long, but he can't accomplish anything for our community unless he learns how to work with others effectively for our community. If you live in the village or barrio, you're used to getting studies about fixing problems in our community, but you're not quite as used to getting solutions. I'm going to fight to stop studying problems in our community and start working on addressing them proactively. We need traffic calming throughout the village, barrio, and Carlsbad. I'll work with the city from day one to implement, implement low ride, low cost options like low-rise speed bumps so we can slow traffic in our communities and on our residential streets and share the roads better with e-bikes, bikes, and pedestrians. This won't just make our, our community safer, it'll make our communities better for business. So folks can get down to the village and barrio and get, and get to restaurants without having to search for parking. Thank you. For Carlsbad dot com.
Thank you. Candidate Manzano.
Thank you to the league. It's been a terrific opportunity for all of us. I know Carlsbad. It's my home. It, I have lived in many places in the world and in this country, but Carlsbad is my home. It's my home three generations deep. I know the district very, very well. I've walked it all, in every district, all the way across it from the, from the Awadon Center to Kelly School, from the Hoss Grove to the Tamarack Beach. And I believe that my participation in the council would be cooperative in seeking solutions to real problems. I do think we have a challenge in finance, and I don't believe we should ever enter into an area where we have deficit spending. And I don't see that any reason why we can't succeed without new taxes. I would hope that you would consider me. I have had vast experience in government, in the military, and in the business community where I've been a CEO and a member of- and in the business community where I've been a CEO and a member of many boards. And I have skills in analysis and in understanding of others that I think can be very helpful to continuing the success of our wonderful community. Thank you.
And on behalf of the Carlsbad community and the League of Women Voters, I just want to thank and commend the candidates. It takes a lot of bravery to run and we very much appreciate you being part of democracy and making it all work for us. So a heartfelt thank you from all of us. That ends our forum for this evening. Thank you and good night, everyone.